Call the meeting order. If everyone else will have Mr. Miller give the invitation.
Lord, I thank you for bringing us all here safe tonight. Be with us, lead guidance as we try to make best decisions for all the children of Brunswick County. Be with Ms. Babson and her family as they deal with their illness and put your healing hand upon her and her family. Lord, take us all home to safety. The weather is bad out tonight, so please get us home safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Cover your arms, up and jump! Here it comes! Cover your arms, up and jump! Here it comes! Ready, run! Center, face!
Plant allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms! Up, out, face!
Tonight, we have a lot of board salutes, so all the board members will head up front and will make our salutes.
Well, the first group of awards, Dr. Snyder, if you would join us up here, please. The North Carolina Scholastic Art Award Competition. The annual North Carolina Scholastics Art Award Competition at Barton College is recognized as one of the largest competitions in the state. This art contest has been in existence since 1979 and is associated with the National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. The nation's most prestigious recognition program for artists and writers comes out of this group. The works of those students earning gold medals and American Vision medals are included in the national exhibition to be held in New York City. More than $3.25 million is given away in scholarships and is available to graduate and seniors who earn national medals. Brunswick County is very proud of the following South Brunswick High School talented visual arts students and their art teachers. Patricia Lyle and Katie O'Neil, if you will join us up here, too. Several of these students won visual arts state and/or national awards in more than one category or contest. This year, these six students from South Brunswick High School had their artwork recognized as state winners at Barton College. The first one, the Gold Key winner, was Gabby Beecham, a 12th grader. For her, it's titled Tattooed Elephant. Travis Nepinski, a 12th grader, won his for self-recognition, self-reflection in a car.
His parents like to receive his certificate for him?
Our third one is Eileen Arnett, 11th grader for Two Lucky Shoes. Number four is Kaziah Mattson, 11th grader for City Street. And we have, as an honorable mention, Caitlin Fulmer. The second group, the National Honor, National Art Honor Society Magazine 2015. In addition, the following five South Brunswick High School art students have been recognized nationally for producing outstanding artistic works to be showcased in the National Art Honor Society Magazine for 2015. Number one, the first person, is Kaziah Mattson for Red Popsicles. Number two is Caitlin Fulmer for her acrylic painting. Number three is Erin White for a shirt drawing. Our fourth student is Molly Duncan for a self-portrait. Our fifth student is Dean Crenshaw, who graduated early. We would also like to recognize the following for being featured in the National Art Honor Society Magazine 2015, recognizing the art program at South Brunswick High School. And Katrina Marchetti. Okay, we still have several more. There's the National Christmas Card Selection by the National Art Honor Society. And that is, congratulations goes to Erin White, whose artwork was selected for featuring the 2014 National Art Honor Society. This is his second one. Is Ms. Brady from North Brunswick High School here? Don't see her. The 2015 North Carolina Zoological Park Endangered Species Poster Contest. In addition, this North Brunswick High School visual arts student, Sarah Hall, taught by art teacher Shane Miller, won the state 12th grade division for the 2015 North Carolina Zoological Park Endangered Species Poster Contest. As a result of this state win, Sarah will receive a one-year family membership to the North Carolina Zoo, a free educational program for her class by one of the Zoo to You educators, a picture of her winning poster incorporated into the official 2015 Endangered Species poster by the North Carolina Zoo, and her own personal copy of the official 2015 Endangered Species posters.
Mr. Thompson, Mr. Thompson. Tell Mr. Miller he's in the audience. The art teacher is in.
The art teacher? Come on up, please, sir. I'm sorry. He's going to be transferred next year. We're going to put him down, yes, he may, maybe. All right, the next award that we have is a very special award to one of the members of the staff at the central office. Daryl Cheers, I know you're here. Come on up. Stand right out there in the middle and praise everybody. The Brunswick County Board of Education congratulates Daryl Cheers for receiving the first annual Clyde Davis Testing Coordinator of the Year Award. Daryl has dedicated over 25 years of service to the Brunswick County school system. It comes as no surprise that his experience as our Director of Accountability would be recognized on a larger stage at the first opportunity. The Clyde Davis Testing Coordinator of the Year Award was created to honor Clyde Davis upon his retirement by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Mr. Davis served in many roles, but at the time of his retirement, he was the North Carolina Department of Public Education Regional Accountability Coordinator for Region Five, which we are in. The award was created to recognize a county-level testing director slash coordinator for outstanding service during the 2013-2014 school year. All 19 test coordinators from Region Five were asked to nominate their choice for the award. After nominations were closed, all names were listed on a ballot and the members voted. Daryl Cheers was overwhelmingly chosen by his colleagues. And Daryl is so young that I think I almost taught him.
You almost taught him.
He was one year out. Yeah, come on up here by me. Daryl also is our Career Technical Education Director.
Parents of all the art students that are here.
Parents of all the art students, if you're here, would you please stand?
All right, the next item on the agenda is presentations, and our first one will be from Mr. Bobby Taylor. And we're glad it's just raining out there right now.
My task this afternoon is to just share with you how we go about checking the weather and the roads and calling schools. It's quite easy when you're working with people like Les Tubb and his staff, because they make our life easier. We have a lot of partners, though, that help us out in making these decisions. We start out, sometime when we hear that there's inclement weather coming, we'll start out monitoring our news somewhere 24 hours out. I have a staff member that actually keeps up this and shares it with me. Then I speak with Mr. Tubb, but we have a lot of partners. We partner with Brunswick County Emergency Service, Mr. Brian Watts and his staff. We work very closely with them. We work very closely with the Brunswick County Sheriff Department and the patrol group. Captain Turner is wonderful to work with. They feed us information. When we call early in the morning, sometime 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning, they tell us what they see. And then, of course, we also partner with the National Weather Service, and they share with us the information that they know what's coming, that they break it down to our level where we can understand if we're expecting ice or if we're expecting snow, where the lines are drawn and how confident they are that where they say it's going to go is where it goes. So they talk with us at our level. And then, of course, my transportation staff. My staff goes out early in the morning, 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning, and we visit the bridges. We physically visit the bridges and we visit the roads that we think have issues, and then we wake up Mr. Les Tubb, in this case.
At 4 o'clock.
And we share with him what we see and the data that we've accumulated from all of these partners that we have. And he makes the call from there. So we really do want to make sure that our students are safe and that the parents sometimes doesn't have to wait to the very last minute to make it a decision whether we're going to be late or early, so.
Have we been early before? Early release, but not early.
Early release, not early go.
Right.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, let me say a public thank you to Mr. Taylor and his crew, because they're the ones that are actually out there. And working with, through Bobby and through the Emergency Management Services Group, we have pledged, and I'm talking about we, I'm talking about the cabinet, to try to make a decision prior to 5 o'clock the day before so that we can put it on the TV stations at the 5 o'clock news. And then additionally, like Bobby was talking about, if we know that we may have to change it from a one hour to a two hour or a two hour to a closure, then we make that decision prior to 6 o'clock in the morning so that we can get it out to parents. But it's Bobby and his staff that really help us, and it's the linking with Mr. Miller's deputies who talk to us and keep us informed. Our big problem is that those of us that live in Southport or on the beach areas, it can be clear, but up in Ash, up in Northwest, we'll have ice on the ground. And it's his group and our deputies that work with us that are telling us where the ice line is and where the problems are. And Bobby, I want to thank you for all that you do for helping make everything safe.
I'd like to thank you also, Bobby, and also mention that when you make the superintendent aware of this, he always makes the board members aware, because we have people that sometimes, you know, just call us. And I got caught one time by my own son that called me, and I didn't know what had happened. And I said, "That won't happen again." So they make sure we know, too, so that we can inform people if they ask us. But I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you've done through the years. It's been, I can't say a thing against what you've done, but a whole lot of things for it. And keep up the good work, you and your team. I know it takes more than just one person.
It definitely does. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll tell you, I see our Teacher of the Year, but I'm going to refer to Ms. Swinski a minute so that she can get settled and have our school spotlights, if that's all right, because I know she's been in meetings all day and she's weathered the weather to get here, so we'll let you take a breather a minute.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea. Ms. Smith's just coming from Curriculum Night at South Brunswick Middle School. So it is my pleasure tonight to bring you your school spotlights. The first we're going to see is Bolivia Elementary School.
I love Bolivia Elementary because of the small, close-knit family feel. They truly do care. Every staff member on this campus cares about students, and if you ever need anything, you barely get the sentence out of your mouth, and someone is asking you what they can do to help.
I think what I like most about the school is you really get a sense that the teachers' involvement is not just from an academic standpoint, but from a development standpoint.
Every single day, you learn something you don't know. I think that whenever I learn something that I didn't knew, usually it just makes me really happy because I like to learn.
One program that we have, it's called Exploration Stations. All of the enhancement teachers get together as a professional learning community and develop a program for students that includes art, music, a lot of the STEM activities, and they get students together as a group and just do fun activities that teach students new skills. This is a program for students who can take their lunch. At their lunchtime, they go to a room, and either Ms. Child, the Assistant Principal, or myself goes and helps tutor the students. Students go there to finish their classwork, to finish their homework, and now we've discovered some students want to go there because it's a quiet place to finish their work and to study for a test.
It's very important because we want to make sure that everyone's safe going down through the hallways into their classrooms, and we want to make sure that no one gets lost, or if they fall, then we can help them up.
They work extremely hard. Every morning when they get here, they get their vests, they get their badges, whatever they need, and report for duty on time.
There's just a sense that they really want them to do well, and it's not just about test scores, it's not just about placement, it's because the teachers here actually care.
They helped me understand a lot of stuff that I didn't know before I came here.
The staff is a family. We've been together a long time. We have wonderful kids, we have a wonderful supportive community, and all together, all the stakeholders together, just make Bolivia a fantastic place for children.
We know that we can trust them with everything because they only want us to learn good things, not bad.
It's like my second family here.
Bolivia Elementary is amazing.
At Bolivia Elementary, everyone's very kind, and I think that it's a wonderful school.
Please join me in welcoming Principal Kathy Owens. Is that little girl going to the movies?
Spokesperson for the school, and she tells you what she thinks. And that was spur of the moment. We did not prepare her for that. That's just the way she is.
That's great. Great presentation. Anybody have any questions about anything?
Well, I was just sitting here thinking. I think I have three children to go through there, four grandchildren, and now a little girl that I tell her I'm her grandma, my associate, she's my great-grandchild, I guess you'd say. So I've been very close to Bolivia for many, many years, and I've always been, I've seen it, but coming from the old school that was so, we had to tear it down to the new school, and then it's been expanded, but it's always had a good program there. So we thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
And I didn't look at the needs list, it always flashes up there real quick, so what were some of the school?
Some of the things are outdated. I know heating and air is always an issue. We still have some leaks on the roof. We recently had a leak in our gym roof. Some of the plumbing facilities need to be updated, and a lot of the buildings with the heating and air, it's very damp. It would be great if they could add a dehumidifier system with that, because when it gets to that point, we have a lot of, all of our papers mildew, and it's difficult. So I think just updating the old equipment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it very much. Do good work. All right, and now we are going to see South Brunswick High School.
South Brunswick High School has a unifying vision of advancing a culture of excellence through learning. Our mission is to have all students graduate college and career-ready. And in order to complete those, we have a wide variety of diverse opportunities for students.
The biggest thing, when you think of South Brunswick High School, is to think of personal relationships. We don't just teach our kids what's in the book. We really want to strive to make them better people, make them productive members of society, and really want to give them that sense of home.
I believe that South Brunswick High School has a staff that is committed to building relationships with students, providing very rigorous academics, and the opportunity to experience life and to share that, so that when our students leave, they have much more than just the book learning.
It's all about relationships with your teachers. That is oh-so important, because they'll be here to help you. They really will be, and I think those relationships are most important to establish.
The fundamentals of marine biology are what is taught, and then the application of that in the fish farms in the back, and then the application in the fish farms that they have in the tanks. And Mr. Bay has built it into an internationally recognized program. We're very proud of our broadcasting program here. The students create a Cougar View every day, and they present it, and the entire school turns on and connects with what's happening in our school.
We're a program about giving, contributing to the community. Our cadets this year will participate in over 130 events at the local, state, and national level. The program here has produced numerous community leaders, military leaders, even nuclear operators.
We are incredibly fortunate here at South to have a pretty robust arts program from fine and performing. We have two incredible art teachers who work with kids in every medium, from print media to digital photography to ceramics. We've got a well-established dance program, as well as a chorus program and a band program.
I love that my children are here, that they're growing, not just education-wise or just not in the learning process, but as individuals, learning who they are, and just the environment along with the students, they know everybody.
I'm very thankful that I was given the opportunity to go to South Brunswick, because it's a very different environment than other high schools. It's a healthy, nice environment, and it's always fun.
Please join me in welcoming Dr. Vicky Snyder, Principal of South Brunswick High
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to make a note just to thank the work of education for all the support done in all of the schools in Brunswick County, and that we're very blessed with many gifts that we do have. So, there are questions or things you'd like to?
You've got a lot of great things going on.
It's amazing. It truly is.
Well, let's see, I've had three children to go to South Brunswick, four friends.
And you've got more coming, right?
Hope not.
The great-grandchild's got to get there.
Hurry up and go to the school! Okay, sorry.
What's your number one need? Why is your number one need?
Well, we would like a roof, so that our students sit in classrooms.
Not the leaky one, just a regular roof.
I was there this morning looking at the leaky one.
It doesn't leak. For two years, we've placed many work orders in, and the maintenance department and the operations do a fantastic job, but I think the scope of this project is such that it really requires an entire refurbishing. And our students are sitting without ceiling tiles and with buckets, big trashcans in the classroom. We just hadn't moved another class this last time. So I would say that is our number one need. And like Bolivia, I think all of the schools that were built around the same time, the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems are obsolete. We have the same air conditioning concerns in terms of environmental health, and electrical can't handle the copiers and the printers and a microwave. No, obviously. You know, the things that are necessary to keep the school going. We would like to see a new auditorium, even if it was one at one of the high schools, or perhaps even at BCA, but somewhere where students could go with the many performing arts that we have and actually have a place where they could showcase that we could call Brunswick County. Athletics, we've been requesting field lights and to take a look at constructing a football field house. field house. Our school did contribute what grant money or monies that we had collected in the last renovation of a very small field house outside of the softball, so that there was actually restrooms there instead of these porta-johns. And our soccer and lacrosse field was supposed to be ready to go in August, and we're now in the girls' season and looking for that. So, we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
I just couldn't help but wonder whether Mr. Bay might be trying to expand the aquaculture program with all those trashcans around the school.
We haven't thought about putting some prongers in there, but...
He puts them in the river, John. He puts the fish in the river, privateris.
Apparently, he's got a lot more water than they'd like to have, but really, it's a very impressive program, but are there other things that we as a school system and as a board can do to promote growth and expansion in some of those successful programs, like I guess the production or broadcast? I could really see that taking off. I have a child that got into that in high school, and it shaped her career, so I'm just wondering if you have some thoughts about...
I think that we're looking at pathways that will help shape careers. I'd just like you to know that our AP program is growing very strong, and we've got over 70 kids, for example, signed up for AP Stats. So, I mean, there's a lot of students that are now actively engaging in the advanced placement, we'd like to expand that. Another thing that we're looking at, just creating some pathways towards, is more STEM-oriented, that's where your aquaculture and many of those could come under sort of that umbrella, and get AP Environmental and some AP courses.
Well, STEM is not just college-bound, that's...
No.
...college and career, both.
Absolutely.
Because, well, they're just, modern jobs require more and more skills that are STEM-based.
That's true. And business, looking at our, we have entrepreneur, business, finance, sports, marketing, we get a huge marketing program now that's developed, and we've got several students going down to the Nationals in DECA. So, it's, those are also very strong programs that we're not highlighting.
It is, just a closing thought, it is my understanding that we actually do have the root problems on the radar and that it fixes it.
We're grateful for that, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Snyder. And just as another programming note for the great things that are happening at South Brunswick High School in the morning, for you up in the morning, WCT's Caroline Waldrop is going to be live at South Brunswick High School, featuring the prom closet in the morning. So it's a great program.
The what?
The prom closet. It is a collection of all the dresses and accessories and shoes, and it will open on March 13th. So, great things, great community support for that program at South Brunswick High School. So, thank you so much.
Just a question about the prom, when is the South Brunswick prom? Dr. Snyder?
She's looking.
Oh, she's looking.
We can tell you prom closet is March 13th.
Just a follow-up, where do they have their prom at? Where is their prom?
Our prom is going to be in South Brunswick.
Down in Calabash?
Yes.
Okay.
We will actually get that information from all of our schools and post it, it's about that May 16th. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Where was the other one? Where was Wes? Wes was on it.
We need to get somebody to get all those dates together.
Twenty-sixth, no, twenty-fifth.
Of what?
Of April.
All right. And now, if you have a breather, we'll have our teacher of year, Ms. Casey Smith. This is another test, this is another test.
You can tell when a teacher comes.
Okay. Dr. Snyder, how about your world languages program? AP Spanish is in there, yeah. We're thankful for that, because we've worked together between the middle and high school to kind of build that program, and a lot of the students that I have in eighth grade end up in that AP program. So tonight, I'm going to provide a synopsis for you all of the types of questions that teachers submitted to Representative Eiler. He joined our TAC meeting back in January. The questions and ideas underline some of the poignant issues still facing public education in our nation and our state and locally here in Brunswick County. They're excellent examples of the challenges and concerns that we as professionals hold about the future of our profession, its ability to be effective, and its success. So as such, they're very relevant for you all, our elected officials, as well as for the general public's awareness. There were three main themes that emerged out of the questions that TAC members pre-submitted, and you can see those on there, their testing, parent-community involvement, and pay. And there are two others, you'll notice at the very end, that just didn't fall under those three categories. And let me just also preface that, you know, it's difficult to stand here and try to tell everyone what 800-plus odd, you know, teachers' main concerns are, but I really feel that TAC does an excellent job of representing their teachers' concerns, and I brought a copy for all of you, it's also posted within the January minutes of our TAC meeting, which is on the Teachers Voice webpage. So in addressing you all tonight, I'll do my best to really elaborate on the background of those issues that I believe colleagues of mine hold about this topic. So, number one is testing. End-of-course tests, end-of-grade tests, North Carolina final exams, analysis of student work process, M-Class, DIBELS, School Net. At this point in our national and statewide discussion about mandated testing, there seems to be a general consensus, at least among students, parents, and teachers, that that list I just quoted is way too long, and that there's too much testing. Teachers recognize that there is some value to standardized tests, but we know without a shadow of a doubt that the value is not near that of what has been placed on them. We accept that mandated testing is a part of our professional world, but tests should always be aligned to standards. And furthermore, the results of end-of-the-year mandated tests do not always provide time-efficient feedback for us to make adjustments to our instruction, which could benefit our students' mastery of content. The results of EOG, EOC, and North Carolina final exams often do not come until months after students have left our classrooms. In the past two years in Brunswick County, we've seen a decrease in district-mandated benchmark testing, for which we are grateful. Benchmark testing has been designed to give teachers a formative evaluation of their students' progress in anticipation of that final overall state-mandated test. The challenge for us is to strike the delicate balance between testing for accountability and measurement purposes without taking away so many valuable hours of instruction. And as I've referenced previously while standing right here, testing has never and will never attest for the myriad ways that our public school students are growing. In the same way that the letter grade recently assigned to all North Carolina public schools only accounts for a glimpse into not only the effectiveness and success, but the overall character and culture of a school, that grade, or, I'm sorry, that test at the end of the year for a student is just a snapshot into their understanding and growth as an individual. So, I hope to return to those ideas that I brought up previously about social, emotional, spiritual, physical growth over the last few months that I have an opportunity to address you all. Moving on to number two, parent and community involvement. There were two questions submitted under this category, and they revolved around accountability. Specifically, it's not only difficult, but impossible for teachers to prepare students to be proficient and at grade level if they are missing school. And we asked, for example, if a student were to miss more than eight unexcused days, wouldn't it be considered neglect? The general statutes affirm that 10 unexcused days, and actually in Brunswick County, it's eight, correct? We verified that?
It's eight, of course, but it still is 10 in terms of the state.
Okay, thank you. Glad I asked. Okay, um, sorry?
For children under 16.
For children under 16. And then Ms. Davis, you said that if they were, what did you say about the age?
The age, seventy-sixteen, or the year in school of age five, there, grounds by the same...
And that that would be considered a misdemeanor. Okay. So, you know, oftentimes, we know, you know, that students who are absent are the very ones that need the most interventions and services, and we're really, we want to reach out to you all, to our elected officials, to our police officers, to our judges, in holding the minority, and I repeat, minority of our parents that, you know, to hold them more accountable to this, which is under our state's general statutes regarding their students' attendance at school. If they're not present, we cannot help them grow or be proficient on their year-ending tests, which carries so much weight for them and for us. Number three is about pay, and let me just say first about pay, that the pay increase that I received this past year, which was the first noticeable increase in my pay in the six years that I've served North Carolina, has helped me to pay off two of three student loans. Amen. Those were monkeys on my back for several years. However, many of my wisest and most experienced colleagues have not been so fortunate. When the pay increase occurred last year, teachers with 28, 29, 30 years of experience, who oftentimes run in professional development, mentoring younger teachers, even if they're not officially mentoring them, they're doing that in their hallways and in their classrooms, and they're generally serving as those quiet leaders of their schools, they receive far less than the advertised 7% raise. Longevity pay for those who receive the one-time payment was spread out across their 10 paychecks, and it was called part of the raise. And a lot of people in the public were not aware that that occurred. And the truth of the matter is, locally speaking, it's not a secret that in Brunswick County, we've lost a higher-than-usual number of teachers to neighboring Horry County schools in South Carolina. We need to plan ahead. Teachers believe that we need to make a plan, not only at the state level, but at our local level, to ensure that that pattern does not continue. We need long-term payment plans that are affordable and that are supported by our public, and which will attract and keep teachers here. We, teachers, just like any other hard-working American, deserve salaries which adjust and are sustainable over time, based on the standard of living and based on a worker's years of experience. A final concern that falls under the category of pay, and which underscores the devaluation that the teaching profession, especially in North Carolina, has experienced over the past couple of years, has to do with compensation for graduate degrees. Again, in this category, I am one of the fortunate ones. I moved to North Carolina in 2009, and I promptly began my master's work at UNCW, and I was able to finish that valuable work before the cutoff created by the General Assembly. And that was work, I should add, that without which is very possible, I would not even be standing here as the Brunswick County Teacher of the Year. Part of my work in my master's program included the opportunity to interview School Teachers of the Year about their lesson planning, to find themes among them. Additionally, the initial interest in research that I began at South Brunswick Middle regarding bullying, for which, if you ask my colleagues, they would probably say that's why we nominated Ms. Smith in the first place, it was born of a class that I was in during my master's program regarding school improvement. It is sad, and it is devaluing of our profession to not reward individuals who seek to better their practice with advanced degrees. What is our motivation? I personally might like to study a doctorate, and believe me, my dad really thinks I should. But I tell him all the time, what is my motivation? I'm going to incur more student loans, but my paycheck is not going to change to help cover paying those back. I ask from the bottom of my heart that you all, as the board, take every opportunity that you get in dialogues with other elected officials to change that decision. It deeply affects the morale and motivation of our teachers, and more importantly, our students are the ones who miss out on the increased expertise of their teachers, not to mention the positive model that acquiring an advanced degree sets for our young people to never stop learning. As you can see, some of the concerns about the teaching profession are not all new. Testing, parent involvement, and pay were the three that I tried to summarize. However, they are ever-evolving topics because policies change, and because educators will never stop fighting to gain that respect and value of our society, as well as to continue to push our profession forward. So at this time, if you all have any questions about anything I've said...
About the teachers' raises, it was my understanding that the teachers were put in groups according to how long they had worked, and one would get a higher raise. Last year, another group, this is coming year, and the other group, the third year, is that wrong?
Mr. Paser?
Sorry, I'm so low, this chair is broken, I can barely see your faces.
That's a good excuse.
I feel like a little kid who's made it up to the adult table at Thanksgiving. The raises last year, you're correct, Ms. Babson, the raises last year came out in a different schedule that are broken down into five-year clusters. So a teacher would, for a period of five years, get the same pay. The challenge with that, or, excuse me, the benefit of that is this, every fifth year, they're going to get a larger increase. And they'll feel that happiness in year one, and probably in year two. In year three, their pay will still not change, nor in year four or five. So it takes a long time, five more years, to get another raise. So the challenge with clusters is, yes, you get a larger raise, but you have to wait five years to get another raise. Now, the other part with the clusters is, if they increase the overall salary schedule and give it a 2%, 3%, 4% increase periodically, that addresses that waiting every five-year period. But in the state of North Carolina, we haven't had that percentage increase to the teacher's salaries for many years. So it feels good in that first and second year, and then it's a long wait beyond that.
Have you addressed this with Representative Eiler or Senator Raven?
There are discussion notes on that document I gave you all, so what we tried to do is make sure we actually drew out of a sombrero, and we tried to make sure that we drew one question from each topic. So, I would have to look back specifically to see what he said about that, but I know that he did address with us that those were things that he specifically was going to be fighting for when, you know, he was at the table with his colleagues.
Catherine and I met with Senator Raven a couple of weeks ago, and he had very high words to say, I guess there's a better word for that, but he was very complimentary of Representative Eiler, and he told us to be sure to let him know what our needs were, because that was who he was listening to. And so, maybe Catherine and I need to sit down and talk with you some more, because we're planning on going to Raleigh. And he said, we asked him about going to Raleigh, he said, "Yeah, they like to see us come up there." Because I know that, I've been doing it for years, but it's just something about, you know, taking that much effort to go up there, and I'd like for the superintendent to go with us. And usually, they'll take time and take us off and run somewhere and talk with us. So, we're very interested in working with you to do everything we can for these problems and concerns that teachers have, because we're very concerned about them. And you mentioned something else, I didn't get quite what you said, it was something about a scale or something for teachers, where they could get a smalling, or, you didn't say small, you said an increase periodically from the county, from local funds?
Well, my message is just that general idea that it's not only sort of a statewide challenge, but it's a challenge for us locally, and, you know, you can group that challenge into all the other financial challenges that we have, whether they're roofs on schools, you know, there's so many things, and I just, they're, you know, in order for things to be sustainable, you know, looking ahead, I know that we, at one point several months back, we, after voting happened, I think there were like 11 or 12 districts across the state that put bond referendums on their voters' ballots, and they all passed. So, just looking ahead at options like that, you know, we're very thankful for the supplements that we currently get, and the past couple of years, you know, the Christmas bonuses or the holiday bonuses, but, yeah, just the general idea, I mean, this is definitely me speaking on behalf of others, because I've been fortunate, like I said, in the position I am, but that's only because of, I mean, my years' experience, and, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me when... And, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me when I look to those people as mentors and, you know, as people who guide me and who shape me as a teacher.
Well, thank you. That's good information.
Anybody else? Thank you so much. All right. Well, now we have made it to the approval of the meeting agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes as noted on the agenda? Second?
You're approving the meeting agenda or the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval of the meeting agenda?
Miss, Mrs. Chairman, I would like to, wait a minute. Wait till we get the consent, and then I'll make my motion.
All right.
I guess that's correct.
We have, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda.
Oh. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Well, that's why I wanted to ask.
We don't have a second yet. But we, we wanted to, I wanted to leave a couple of things on the agenda.
We need to, we need to leave two things. Do we need to do it now?
We need a second to have discussion.
Okay, well, go ahead, and you do first.
You only need to have the first to do it. You only need a motion to do, to discuss.
Okay. All right. How about it?
I think he's going to do one first, and then I'm going to do one.
Madam Chair, I wanted to take the, under the action items, actually it was under consent. The day treatment proposal, I'd like to take that off the agenda to discuss it at the curriculum committee meeting, we have it later on in March, and get a little bit more information about that. That would be under, you've got it under consent items, day treatment proposal.
All right. Item number four.
And, and discuss that at the curriculum committee. Hopefully, the board members can be there, and we can have someone from the, well, we can get a little bit more information about it. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Madam Chair. I'd, I'd like to see us delay action until this, our next meeting on item number one under the action agenda, selection of high school athletic facility assessment and plan consultant.
John, is that, is there any time, in fact, the reason I ask, we probably could do that Thursday?
Well, that's what I was actually thinking, our next board meeting would be Thursday. It's already advertised as our next board meeting.
It's a closed session.
Well, we could do this...
But we could do that.
Well, we have to open an open session, of course, but I, I think this would be something that I'd, I'd like to spend some time talking with everybody about, because we haven't not had any discussions. We had such a long day the other day, particularly with the three interviews, and we all had to leave fairly quickly afterwards. So I'd, I'd like to, rather than muddle our way through it tonight, if we could, give ourselves a little bit more time to study the proposals and make a decision on Thursday.
Okay. Any other changes? All right. Do I hear a motion then to approve the meeting agenda with the changes of removing item number four under consent for day treatment program and action item number one for the selection of the high school athletic facility consultant?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as revised.
Second?
Second.
All right. Agenda's approved. Now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the meetings as listed? February the 3rd, February the 19th.
I move that we approve the minutes as listed.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Forgot to vote on the meeting agendas. Is everybody in favor of the meeting agenda?
Aye.
I'm not doing too good. Supposed to do this right the second meeting around, right? All right. Items on consent for approval, do I have a motion to approve items on consent?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent items as listed.
Second?
Except for the one that we've already taken off.
Right.
It's already taken off.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I have a motion for the action items, which includes, right now, we're looking at the makeup plan for days missed due to inclement weather.
Madam Chair, I have a few, well, look, I've given each of you a memorandum. Dr. Meadows surveyed our principals, and we gave them three options for making up the time that was missed on February the 24th. And the first option was to make up the day on May 1st, which is a, a workday. The second option was to add seven minutes to each day beginning March 9. The third option was to add 10 minutes to each day beginning April the 13th. And as you can see, the preferred option from the principals was number one, by making up the day on May the 1st.
What day is May the 1st? What day are we? Friday?
Yes, ma'am. And if you noticed, option number one received nine votes from the principals, number two, three, and the third option received two votes, and there were five principals that, that did not respond. And I recommend that we do option number one.
I, I have to say I agree with option number one, because now when I visit the schools, especially the elementary schools, I've heard that the elementary students were somewhat worn out at the end of the day, and we add on another seven to 10 minutes, that would be just an additional time. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve option one, the had-to-make-up day on May 1st.
Second, for discussion, because I would like to make the point, a couple of points. So I second.
All right, any discussion?
Well, Madam Chair, I, I think either option one is best for a couple of reasons. One, teachers don't have to make up anything, they were there, they, they had workdays. I think in one case, it might have been optional workdays, but teachers were, were expected to be there. So this is actually, if we extend the school day, we're, we're actually imposing additional burden on our teaching staff. So I'd like to avoid doing that.
And it's a problem with Ms. Cahill on how the pay option works, particularly with the classified personnel.
Because of the extended...
Yes.
Extended time. Well, and because it's only one day, I, I just think it's simple. Let's just do it, and it's over. Because by the time this year ends, the way this weather has occurred, we may have other makeup days to consider, and these other options, like last year, we used the, the option of extending the school day, but let's use it as a last resort to keep from adding to the burden teachers already have.
Any other discussion?
We're, we're blessed to only have one makeup day at this time, but I've always been a believer that's one, that's one option while we put teacher workdays in, is the, in, in case of an emergency, that we have to make up days.
All right. So we had a motion on the floor to approve that and had a second. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And on to our discussions and announcements.
Mr. Thompson's going to make the...
All right, our board briefs, committee meetings.
Well, I'll start with the operations committee. We, as usual, had a fairly full agenda, but some of the highlights of the, the meeting, we, we received information about the indoor air quality program that we operate, or that is operated out of our facilities division or operations. It's a robust program. It's, it tries to be very objective. In other words, when someone makes a complaint, the response is not, well, I just was over there, I know they don't have a problem. They will actually go and do the testing and make sure that there is not a problem. So we have a very robust indoor air quality program for monitoring to make sure that our classrooms are as good as they can be. I don't know if all the board members recall, but a few years back, I hate to say how many back, but we had portions of, one school on the north end that was actually uninhabitable because of problems with indoor air quality. But that has, we have gotten a much better handle on that. We are moving forward on all of our current construction projects. We will be bidding the Waukesha Gym multipurpose facility, I think it's in March, yeah, March 12th. And we, we will be ready for the financing to go into place in April and May with the contract in hand, pending the outcome of the bidding, of course, but we will finally be able to move ahead with the Waukesha facility. And correspondingly, at the north end, our North Brunswick High School classroom addition will bid in the same timeframe, for the same reason, because of the financing instrument that we're working with commissioners on. And just for the public's information, we're actually, the county is assisting us as an agent in all of this, and it's a unique relationship that has worked well for us in the past. Like to touch on something that's near and dear to all of us, and that is the South Brunswick Middle School soils report. We've been struggling trying to get answers for the non-toxic-toxic material. It's not identified by the EPA as being toxic, but because there are some trace elements of, I think maybe it's some hard minerals, but I'm sorry?
What, manganese?
Yeah, there's an elevated manganese level, but we, we have, finally have a solution that is acceptable to the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources, and we, we are going to try to, I guess, solve two problems at once. We're going to use it as roadbed material for fire, fire truck access and from some drives at the high school. So we'll actually be able to take material that's stockpiled and use for that purpose. And we're hopeful that we will move ahead with putting the, the field back into service. The, I guess that's, is that soccer practice or baseball?
Softball.
Softball. Soccer, too. We have been very good about, we have been very good about not being on that site, but in the meantime, it has grown up, and it looks really well, like we've abandoned the property. Well, indeed, we don't want to abandon that property, it's important for us to use, but we want to make sure that there are no questions about the safety of that use. Coincidentally, we, at our operations meeting, we hired, and I think we might have in the consent items tonight, approved, well, let's see, we did not in the consent, but, oh, that's right, we made, we were, actually took a vote on it at the operations committee to hire roofing consultants to update our, both our conventional roof systems and our metal building, metal roof systems. So we hire, we have two different consultants that will update and tell us which roofs need to be fixed when. Of course, I'm sure we can get anecdotal evidence from South about which roofs need to be fixed when, but some of the roofs that aren't leaking, next year will be. So we, we do have to have a condition assessment, so we are moving forward with that. And I, finally, just the, the board wants to have a much better handle on the quality of its athletic facilities, both for male and female students, and how, how well we are doing in terms of what we're offering, in terms of the quality of the facility and the adequacy of the facility. So we are going to do a countywide assessment for the high schools, and I believe it's being expanded to include the middle schools. We plan to work closely with Parks and Rec, athletic directors at the schools, and the communities of each school, so that we can identify and do as much as we can in identifying critical needs for the schools. We don't have a lot of money to put into replacing all the lights and things that Ms., Dr. Snyder had pointed out at South, but we need to know what our, I guess, our highest priority items actually are. So that, this Thursday, we will make a, I believe we will make a selection. We had three excellent presentations, and hopefully you, you still have your materials, can, can read through them.
Can I use it?
Yes.
I didn't get one.
Thank you.
This is for the...
Okay. Thank you. And now Ms. Babson's going to update on the curriculum and policy meeting.
We had a presentation at the curriculum policy meeting from Mr. Petria, is that how, Rusty Petria? And they were, he wanted to present a proposal to launch what they called a saltwater fishing club, or clubs, at the four Brunswick County high schools. And the proposal's based on, starting out with 50 students who could participate, a school employee at each of the sites would have to serve as a sponsor, and the program would rely heavily on community partnerships to provide both for monthly tournaments. And they've already done a lot of the groundwork for this, so I think this is, we're looking into this, it sounds like it might be a way to engage more students, make them excited about going to school. We have had some defunding from the state driver's education program. So we approved a resolution regarding the defunding, and, because as of, I guess we'd send to the, to the general seminar. It's going to cost us, if we have to fund it, $225,000 more than what we already have, we're currently doing. And currently, the state allows the districts to charge up to $65 per student. However, the individual cost per student is approximately $225. The resolution asks legislators to consider refunding the program, finding other funding that would not impact education, or remove the requirement from public school, excuse me, obligation altogether through privatization. We also approved the 2015, 2016 school calendars. We did, we did that tonight, I think that's on the consent item. And then we approved a reviewed draft policies. And I'm not going to...
We went through a lot of policies.
Went through a lot of policies. I guess what I'm trying to say to you is that we put our draft policies on, on the website at www.bcswan.net under news, if you're interested in going there and finding out more about the policies. And I think we also had copies tonight, we're trying to, we, we discussed this, we work all day long in our committees, and then we come here and have a short meeting and say zap, zap, zap. And so we're trying to inform the public more of what's happening, what the board is doing, and what's happening concerning their everyday lives of children in the school system. And so if you have any suggestions, we'd like to have them, but we think this is some steps toward making you know what we're up to.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Babson. And we, several of us were, and several of the central office staff, were at Jesse Mae Monroe Community Day, and I'm sorry, there's not anybody here to sing their little school song, because they had the students sing that, and let me tell you, it's a lot of verses, it's a lot of words, and I don't think I could have done it for memorization, but Mr. Tubb was there.
It really was a, a neat morning, even though the weather was, was bad, it was rainy and windy and cold.
It was a delayed day.
In a delayed day, because it was so cold. But still had quite a few members from the community, and as Madam Chair said, the group of second graders sang one song, and then we had a song about Jesse Mae Monroe that has now become the, the Jesse Mae Monroe school song, and it was sung by another group of students, and I don't know how they got through it either. It was that...
It was that, but it was really, really interesting and neat and fun to watch a group of students sing about their school and to take pride in it. The video that you see up here spotlighting our schools, each board meeting, Ms. Otto showed that to the members of the community, talked about what was going on at Jesse Mae. And she identified a number of organizations and groups of people that needed to be thanked, and she did such at this meeting. Among those were the churches of the community, the VFW, the homeowners association, the Lions Club, and coincidentally, the Lions Club glasses truck was outside the van for looking and having students have their eyes tested for glasses. Again, it was a fun day, and I appreciate the board members, and I know the staff over here, we had a good time walking through the building, meeting teachers, looking at what was going on in the classes, and the teachers were really glad to see us out that day also. And the students were just, I think they were the ones most impressed by us being there, more so than we were.
And we were impressed by them.
That we were.
They had their.
Safety patrol.
They had safety patrol badges on and were leading us in groups around and answering questions about what was going on in the school, where we could go if we wanted to see a particular area of the school.
Well, I was particularly taken by the passion of the volunteers. The school has been adopted by a number of civic organizations, like you say, the Lions Club, and churches and others, but all of those folks are very passionate about Jesse Mae Monroe, and they're excited and are putting in lots of valuable hours with these kids. So I would like to just commend that effort, and as we heard from the Teacher of the Year this evening, parental involvement, community involvement is critical in the education of children. Jesse Mae, they get it.
And we had Jesse Mae Monroe there with her daughter, and of course, our own person that works for us there also. And that was kind of neat to see the lady for whom the school was named, and to talk to her and let her get a short history lesson of the school and of the community, too. It was quite interesting. And again, I appreciate all you board members for going down, even in the bad weather. It was worth our time. I know it was.
It was.
It's approximately 55-minute drive from Leland.
It is not short.
On a good day.
On a good day.
Well, and next week, we'll have school visits. Again, we'll be visiting Southport Elementary, Supply, and Shalote Middle, and then we'll have our committee meetings on the 17th, and our parent advisory meeting on March 24th will be at Jesse Mae. See if there's any other. And I would like to say that I had a very enjoyable time at Virginia Williamson Elementary School today, and I'm sorry, I did not have on any Dr. Seuss clothes, but a lot of the community came out to read Dr. Seuss books to the kids, and Mr. Thompson was there, and we had a, we had a good time. And the kids had their hair done in ways I've never seen. And some little girl said she got up three hours before school to fix her hair.
There were several of the little Who girls.
Yeah, a lot of Who girls with styrofoam cups underneath, I don't know how they do it, but anyway, so.
It was wild hair day today at Virginia Williamson Elementary.
That's right. Ms. Bailey was there, so might see some other folks that were here. If there's no other comments or discussion, then I ask for a motion to go into closed session.
After a short break.
After a short break, yes, we'll have a short break, yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll have a short break.